All right. Good evening. If we can stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good evening. We will start with the report of the chairman. I have nothing this evening, so let's move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you. A second? Thank you. I have a motion by Mr. Gutman and a second by Mrs. Casella to approve the consent agenda. Do I have any discussion on this? Hearing none. All in favor, please. Great. Thank you. Motion passes. We will move on to reports of the committees and liaisons, and we will start with our master reps.
All right. Good evening. I will start. Today, the seniors attended a yellow dress assembly during period three, and it was a one-woman play which ultimately spread awareness for dating violence. She told a story in first person about a teenage girl who was in an abusive relationship, and it truly taught seniors to be aware of the issue, and it offered ways to help handle this if it's happening to you or someone you know. And it was a really remarkable -- it was a really remarkable play, so we all enjoyed that.
Okay. Thank you.
Recently, freshman -- the freshman class has been taking field trips to the Metropolitan Museum of Art. And also, this week, spring break trips start for the school with people departing to Greece on Thursday, and the France and Germany trip will be leaving on Saturday.
Senior Servant Day is this Friday, which is a fundraiser for the junior class, and it's a fundraiser where underclassmen can bid on seniors, and then on this Friday, they make them do whatever they want. So a lot of times, seniors have to dress up in costumes or carry underclassmen throughout the halls. It's a really fun fundraiser. And also, spring sports games start this week, if the fields are ready, which hopefully they will be, not too much snow. And that's all we have for this week.
Great. Thank you so much. I failed to do one thing in the chairman's report, and that is to introduce our new Board of Education representative, who is Shannon Minaco, to the board. We welcome you.
Thank you.
Shannon is going to be filling Darrell Trump's spot, who had resigned, and she will be joining us along the way. Do you want to say anything? All right.
No.
Now we have two Minacos.
Yes, we do have two.
That's great.
Well, welcome. We're happy to have you.
Thank you. Looking forward to it.
I do have a finance committee report. We did meet tonight. As everybody knows, our budget stands at 1.82 percent increase for the Board of Education, and tomorrow is our referendum, so we're asking everybody to please get out and vote. Tomorrow, polls are open 6:30 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and please vote on the budget. Does anybody have any other committee reports?
I have CES.
Great. Thank you.
You've probably noticed, I haven't reported on CES in a while. I missed the January meeting. They don't have a February meeting, and then the March meeting had to be rescheduled due to snow, and I had a conflict when they had rescheduled it. So I finally made it to the April meeting, and there's a lot of talk about different things that they are working on with the legislature. One of the things that they said is coming down the pike is that there's talk about having all public schools administering a kindergarten entrance inventory, and that would require training to administer, and it really -- it would not be an evaluation of anything we've done because it's an entrance inventory. So it kind of is more of an evaluation of what has been done thus far with the kids and how ready they are for kindergarten, you know? So the discussion kind of was along the lines of, it sounds like a nice idea, but it's an unfunded mandate at this point, and that, you know, so it's all up for discussion right now.
I could add, Amy, to that.
Yes.
We were notified of the state for that, and we have principals, K, Moser, Special Ed, Sheila Cassinelli, for instance, going to listen to the new inventory. We've always had a kindergarten inventory for assessing kids. Now, the question is, how aligned is it to what the state is recommending?
Yeah. So, and, you know, not every district has that, so, you know, and we would be required to use theirs as opposed to something that we had already been using. Another thing that they talked about on the state level was that our all districts are going to have to start reporting their financing to the state using something called the Uniform Chart of Accounts, which I'm sure Gabby, who I do not see tonight, is unfortunately very familiar with. They are starting to implement it, but it will be required in the year 2016, 2017, and the reporting will be done by building to the state. And what it's supposed to do is normalize the way everybody looks at per pupil spending because a lot of times, right now, you know, for example, we were talking about how our nurses are on the town side, but some other districts, you know, the nurses are really on the municipal side of the budgeting. And so even if things are not part of the school district budget, when they're reported using this Uniform Chart of Accounts, even if something is not part of the school district budget, it will still get reported, so it will kind of give you an apples-to-apples, you know, comparison of spending, you know, building by building, every building in this state. So I thought that was kind of interesting, although it sounds like, you know, some districts are going to have more trouble than others. We're now solidly all on the same system, munis, between the town and the schools, but not every district is, and so, you know, some other districts are going to have more difficulty with it. Just another few highlights they were talking about, you know, and I've mentioned this before, that CES has been talking about doing some STEM workshops with other districts, and, you know, districts that are already doing STEM programs, you know, are kind of spreading the word about what they're doing, and so, you know, it was kind of nice that we're on the forefront of that. And then the other thing is, I know we have participated in the CES program about reimagining the Library and Media Center, and the woman who was -- who had put that together was actually given an award by the Connecticut Association of School Librarians recently. So I thought, you know, something that we're participating in was actually, you know, recognized as a wonderful program. So, and then the final thing was, on April 21st, there is going to be a session on social and emotional learning, and the presenters are going to be Scarlett Lewis, which is one of the Sandy Hook parents, and someone named Dr. Chris Cook, and it is working with the Yale Center of -- Yale Center for Emotional Intelligence, and so that's going to be April And that's all I have for CES.
I could just piggyback on the library media situation. Jack had worked to bring Derry. What was his name?
Oh, Bill Derry.
Bill Derry, who was really at the forefront of reimagining these spaces. He was actually a speaker at one of their -- one of their sessions down at SES. He came here just last Thursday and did a presentation to all the instructional leaders, administrators, and library media specialists. He was here for the whole afternoon, wasn't he?
Evening, too, over at the --
Yeah. So it was a nice piggyback to the whole process.
Great. Thank you. Did you have a question? I thought I saw your --
Yeah, I was just wondering, speaking of CES or the state, if anything's come up regarding, like, a cutoff age for kindergarten being changed? Because right now, you have four-year-olds coming into kindergarten, and kindergarteners expect to do first-grade work, and it's quite the challenge.
Yeah. No, they haven't talked about it recently. I know there was some discussion about it prior, but I know our June meeting, the CES lobbyist, is going to be coming down to give us our legislative update, and so I'll be sure to ask then, you know, at the June meeting if there's any more discussion about it.
Yeah, because Connecticut's one of the few states that allows four-year-olds in kindergarten. I mean, it's --
Yeah, they have to. It's December 30th. They have to apply by December 31st, so you can have, you know, someone starting kindergarten that is a whole year younger than their --
And they're expected to read and write.
Yeah.
That's a great question.
Does anybody else have any committee reports? All right. We will move on to public participation. If anybody in the public would like to speak. All right. Hearing none. We will move on to the report of the superintendent.
I just want to chat a little bit about the budget tomorrow. This evening, we had a reminder go out that tomorrow is a budget referendum, so parents would be notified of that fact. It was a very short note, so just facts about the voting tomorrow. We'll send out another reminder likely tomorrow. The budget increase for the Board of Education this year is 1.82 percent over last year's spending. We were cut by the Board of Finance in the First Selectman $225,000 from the budget that the Board of Education adopted in January. Okay? And we are fortunately in a decent position to work through that reduction because of the performance of our medical plan. Okay? We have done so well, I mean, and I have to congratulate the Board of Education on their cost containment strategies, you know? Going to an HSA, self-funded plan, et cetera, has been a real positive force for us. This is the second year running where we have had a modest or no increase as in this year. Okay? I see districts all over the state with 10 and 12 and 15 and 20 percent increases in their medical costs, and, you know, when you're spending the kind of money that we're spending, those kind of percentages, the money adds up very, very quickly. So we should be able to massage our budget effectively for the cut that's been handed to us, but I say, as I have said directly to the Board of Finance and to the First Selectman and anyone that will listen to me, our wiggle room is not great for next year should the budget fail, and we don't have a lot of places to go. It would be difficult to find any significant money. As I said in the Board of Finance committee meeting tonight, we've done some rough projections. It's early in this current budget year, but we've done some rough estimates on where we think we're going to end up with this budget, and we're -- we may be to the good about $80,000 when all is said and done at the end of this year. And I think if you put that in the perspective of a $52 million budget, you realize very quickly that that is a very small, narrow margin, and we are worried about that small margin. Okay? So that should help frame the concerns I have about decreasing the budget much further below a 1.82 percent.
Jim?
Yes.
I just wanted to piggyback, and I don't know if somehow I missed this during our budget discussions, but when you came to Parents Council last week, you mentioned that it wasn't just the 225 that we also are now taking on the expense of the nurse at St. Jude.
Correct.
I don't know if that's been mentioned in our meeting, but could you speak to that?
Yeah, I can. We, as you remember, by state statute, every town has to support or pay for a nurse of any of the private schools that lie within their jurisdiction, just like the transportation. Okay? So for many years, the town of Monroe has been budgeting for the nurse. The nurse is a singleton person. We have no expertise on the town side for managing that person, for providing professional development, those kinds of things. So the logic was, could that position be absorbed onto the Board of Education's side so that the person would be better supervised and evaluated and professional development and all of those things? And I agree. Okay? We came to the board, and the deal that we struck was that we would pull that person into the bargaining units contract and that the town would fund the other side. Well, somehow, there was a miscommunication or something happened where that did not get budgeted on the town side. Okay? So right now, that's residing with us. So we have to wiggle somehow the $58,000. Now, we had worked hard this year, as we have in the past, to find reductions in staff commensurate with our student population declines. And, you know, this year, we decided that we didn't need two nurses at the middle school any longer. We could lose a position. So the loss of that position now is a wash because we've absorbed now the St. Jude's nurse. So we're going to have to wiggle some things around to make that end meet.
Thank you.
Okay. And that's all I have.
Okay, great. Anybody else have questions for Jim's before we move on? All right. We will move on to all business, and first up is appointment of the Board of Education Vice Chairman position. Jim, I'm going to let you run this.
Okay, sure. I'll take nominations for the floor for the Vice Chairman's position. Mr. Gutman?
I'd like to nominate George King for Vice Chairman of the Board of Ed.
Do we have a second? Christine? Okay. Okay, so that was the first. Christine is the second. George, do you accept the nomination?
I accept. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any more nominations from the floor? Alan?
I'd like to nominate Lee Crouch.
Is there a second?
Second.
Amy, a second? Any -- Lee, do you accept?
I do.
Okay. Any discussion on that? No? Oh, wait. I'm sorry. Let's wait till we go to the vote, I think, right?
No.
Discussion comes out for the vote.
Okay. I'm sorry. Just wanted to talk a little bit about Lee Crouch. She's served 12 years on the Board of Ed. She's Chair of the Communications Committee. She's been a former President of Parents Council. She's done six medical trips to Haiti, working with children. She's been a mentor with children in Monroe since 2004, and she's currently mentoring a high school student. And her 12-year tenure on the Board of Ed has been marked by unwavering commitment to quality education in students in Monroe.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to comment? Amy?
Yeah, I'd like to just kind of piggyback on that. I do think that we have a really wonderful bipartisan board here, and Lee is our senior member of the board right now, and I think it would be a wonderful act of bipartisanship. George, I know you would also do a lovely job, so you know it's nothing personal, but I do think that Lee has been our longest-serving member, and it would be really nice to see her be able to be the vice chair.
Okay. Other comments? Why don't we take them in reverse order? So let me call the motion for the nomination of Lee Crouch for Vice Chairman's position. Any other discussion? All those in favor? One, two, three, four. Opposed? One, two, three, four, five. Okay, let's take the second, so the motion fails. Let's go to the first. All those in favor of George King for Vice Chair? One, two, three, four, five. Opposed? One, two, three, four. Motion carries. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
You and George can -- I mean, you and George and Jeff, sorry. Can switch seats.
Gee, you made it up here for a whole, what, five minutes?
Sure. We're showered. We're showered. All right, welcome. Congrats, George. We will move on to curriculum proposals. Second review, vote anticipated. These are items that we went over at our last meeting. I think we're just going to try to approve them as one motion. So do I have a motion to approve the eighth grade mathematics and then the five 12th grade English curriculum proposals as presented? So moved. Thank you. Let's have a second. Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on these?
I'd just like to say I'd really love to take some of those English classes. I wish they'd been offered when I was in high school. They sound really great, and I think they're going to motivate the kids.
Yeah, I know, they do sound great. All right. Any other discussion? All right. So I have a motion by Mrs. Primack, second by Mrs. Crouch. All in favor? Okay. Motion passes. We will move on to item C, Board of Education Goals. Are we doing a presentation?
A while back, yes, we're going to do a presentation up here. It'll be fairly succinct, I hope. At an earlier board meeting, former Chairman Trump had asked for a periodic update on Board of Education Goals and Action Plans, so this was an opportune time to do that. So why don't I relocate to that mic?
Perfect.
And we'll walk you through a couple of slides. We're not going to go through every single goal or action plan. Just to provide some history on this, we began with board goals and action plans back in 2012. We had our first three-year cycle, 2012 to 2015, and now this is our second cycle. We actually finished a little bit early on our first cycle and so delved right into the 15-18 group. I'll just -- John, if you could hold that slide right there for a second. The goals that we have in front of us under curriculum and instruction are that we will provide a challenging and accessible curriculum through engaging instructional strategies to meet the needs of all students. In the category of human and financial resources, we will maximize student success by hiring, training, and retaining the most highly effective professional staff. Under the goal category of facilities, we will maintain high-quality facilities to meet extracurricular and curricular needs. Under educational resources, the goal is resources, technology and instructional materials used to enhance instruction and co-curricular activities will be of high quality and insufficient supply to support the ever-changing needs and goals of our students. And then a new grouping in this cycle is community building, and we will develop opportunities to inform and involve the community in an active, supportive, educational partnership. So I think from that, we then develop objectives. And in the case of curriculum, just to give you an example, John, if you would go to page three, just to give you an example of how this all fleshes out, what we do is we take that goal, and then we go back to the administrative team to flesh out exactly what we need to do in the form of objectives. In this particular goal, we have eight objectives. Okay? So each objective, then, gets converted into a series of action steps that you can see what that looks like on page eight, John, if you would. So under curriculum and instruction, the goal to, you know, provide this engaging instructional strategies to meet the needs of all students. Objective one, continue to implement the Connecticut Common Core standards, K-12, through highly effective instructional strategies. If you look at the action steps there, John, I'm not seeing. Is it? Oh, there it is. Okay, great. On my copy, it's on page eight. It must just lapsed over. One of the action steps that we have been working on very, very diligently is that third action step, which is examine and purchase a Connecticut Core-aligned K-5 math resource. So we have been working throughout the course of the year through Cindy Brooker, Sheila Cassinelli, our building principals, and a whole host of teachers to study the options out there for curricular materials for grades K to 5. This has been a weakness area for us. We have been struggling to find appropriate resources for the Common Core standards here. And if you remember, last year, we had to have math nights to help parents work with their children as we developed those new strategies of teaching. So they piloted, teachers piloted two different resources, Stepping Stones and Math in Focus, and right now, we are at the point of making a decision on April 22nd of which one we will bring forward to the Curriculum Council and to you for a first review on May 4th. So you'll see that the update is the committee has met, narrowed down the options to two, exploring the resources and school visits. You know, our teachers went out to Ridgefield to see this in operation and see what it looked like, and we're ready to make a decision now. So that's the kind of emphasis that we're putting on to these goals and action plans and all of the action steps to make sure that we're moving forward in a positive and progressive manner throughout the three-year period. I'll draw your attention. I picked out one from each category. If, John, you would go to page 19, under human resources, human and financial resources. The second one there is page 19. Hold on. Objective two, John?
Under curriculum.
No, no. Uh-oh. Why aren't our things aligned?
No, because the pages are out.
Oh, pagination with the PowerPoint.
All right, so it's under --
So go to human resources, objective two.
That was past curriculum instruction, right?
Yeah, it's like the third one.
Right here?
Yeah, that's it. Okay. The bottom action step there, determine the PD needs for non-certified staff and provide training. This was a thing that we had invested heavily in beginning last year to get professional development for our paraprofessionals in the form of a program called Compass. On this past day, Professional Development Day, we had five different groups of paraprofessionals being trained at various levels of that Compass training. John Batista spent an entire day with one of the groups doing the instructional, advanced instructional strategies. And what was that like, John?
This was a group of pairs who last year took all the training, so they really graduated from the instructional strategies. And so these are really committed people, and we spent the day talking about instructional strategies, how to help teachers in the classroom, what their role was, and how they can help kids that they work with, and not just their student, but the whole class. It was very effective, great, rich discussions. These people really want to do well in the classroom and they were just excited about having these instructional strategies that they could use in their class. And I've got an email sent saying, you know, I tried that one, it worked really well, I'm going to try it this way. So it's been a real positive, positive experience.
Okay, great. John, if you would go to facilities, objective number two on that one.
This one?
No. Facilities.
Oh, human. Oh, facilities, there we go.
Yeah. Objective two. All of these updates, this whole PowerPoint and update, this status assessment is online on our webpage, so you can go to it anytime.
Under Board of Education.
Under Board of Education. Yep, under Board of Education. So on this one, the objective under facilities, the Ad-Hoc Committee to study the enrollment trends in available facilities and advise the Board of Education on future trends. You'll see that the facility study is being conducted by Fletcher Thompson and Malone and McBroom. The findings are reported to the Ad-Hoc Committee. We have finally got that report. The Ad-Hoc Committee has had some struggles in the past year and a half or so in getting this work done. The work is done, and we are compiling some revised, more understandable presentation of the data on the different kinds of options that we have available to us in this shrinking enrollment and our spaces that we have. So the next meeting is the 22nd, I believe, of April, or the 21st of April?
21st.
It's the day after the next board meeting.
21st.
21st. We will have now put the remaining data into usable form, and we will begin to digest exactly the pros and cons of each of the different scenarios. So we are full steam ahead right now, and I fully expect that come September, we will be able to make a recommendation to the Board of Education. Okay? So we're making good progress on that now. And then, John, under educational resources, if you would go again to the second objective on that one.
Yes.
Yes. As you know, we are now mandated with the new teacher and administrator evaluation plan, et cetera, to conduct the school climate surveys. We began last year. We, you know, we had difficulties with our surveys last year. You know, they weren't clear to everyone. We couldn't get 100 percent participation in some cases, et cetera. We really wanted to bolster that. John has been working very hard with all of our administrators in revising those surveys, and we expect all of our surveys to be going out in two weeks. So making great progress on that one as well. And then finally, John, if you would go to community building, the objective, we only have one, and that's to update and implement a communication plan to increase community awareness and involvement in Monroe Public Schools. And we, I think we have made some really significant inroads. we, I think we have made some really significant inroads in putting Monroe Public Schools in general, and all of our schools in particular, out in front of people in a very, very positive way. If you look at the box here, you know, what we have done to advertise Monroe Reads and celebrating the arts through the Da Vinci Festival, the Parent Lecture Series, our involvement with the Farmer's Market, you know, the fact that our Common Chords administrators now play in the gazebo, you know, once a cycle is something to see. Our end-of-the-year celebration, this is our second annual end-of-the-year celebration. We have felt the need to celebrate our successes, our retirements, and all of those things in one event at the end of the year, rather than having each school do a separate event. John has really spearheaded organizing that. So, John, why don't you just speak to what that looks like this year?
On your place, I put, should say the second annual, but we'll next time, but it is the second annual recognition ceremony. We do celebrate our retirees there and all the staff with twenty, twenty-five, thirty, thirty-five years of service. And that's the place where we announce the Teacher of the Year. So, it is the first time a Teacher of the Year is announced, and we're gonna have it this year on Thursday, June fourth, from five to nine. I welcome anyone to come. Down here, it says, give it to the representatives, but if you wanted to send me your registration, that would be fine. I know last year, a couple people came. Yeah, it was great. It was wonderful to see that. And it's nice that everybody gets to be together. In the past, we would have a retirement dinner for Massey and then one for Jackie Hollow, and people weren't together. And so, this is a way to bring the whole staff together to just celebrate everyone. And the Teacher of the Year thing really kind of is the crowning of this whole thing. So...
Yeah, it's a great event. We have the Capstone Project, where so many community members are now involved in our high school, the Career Day, Alumni Day, Celebration of Reading, Youth Sportsman Workshop. We're tweeting, we're texting, we're doing all the social media things to get the word out about what a great place Monroe Public Schools is. So, we're happy with our progress in this regard as well. So, that's the way this works. This is the tool that keeps me kind of moving forward to make sure that the work is being done and that everybody is rowing in this right direction, basically. This is the tool that I use to evaluate that. And I, sometimes I need to pick this up and say, oh, hey, Gabby, or John, or Jack, or Sheila, or somebody, what's the status on this? We're falling a little bit behind on this, and then, you know, we fix it. Or, you know, good work, we're ahead on this one, and let's go forward. So, this is the tool, and it's available online all the time under Board of Education on the district website.
Anybody have questions about it?
Right there.
Great.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. We are up to new business, and first item is the approval of the proposed dates for the Jackie Hollow Recognition Night and also the Massey High School graduation. And those proposed dates, Jim, do you want to talk about them?
Yes, they were exactly in line with the protocols that we have always used in the past. The high school graduates the day before the last day. Jackie Hollow is typically the night before that. I'm quite relieved to tell you and to present these dates to you, so they will be June sixteenth for Jackie Hollow, June seventeenth for Massey High School. And the reason I'm so pleased is because my daughter is getting married on the twentieth, and I was afraid that it was gonna interfere with the rehearsal dinner, but it's not.
Goodness. Do I have a motion to approve the proposed dates for Jackie Hollow Recognition and Massey Graduation?
Someone?
Thank you. Second? Second, thank you. I have a motion by Mrs. Crouch and a second by Mrs. Casella to approve the dates of June sixteenth for Jackie Hollow Recognition Night and June seventeenth for Massey High School Graduation. All in favor? Great, thank you. We will move on to Item B, Policy First Review. George, would you like to talk about those policies?
I would. Yes. So, we have two policies within the packet tonight. Call your attention to those. The first is the use of dogs to search school property, which involves bringing of trained dogs onto a school campus at the discretion, the sole discretion of the superintendent to search for contraband material, primarily around lockers, but also parking lots and common grounds. There's a lot of guidelines in the policy. It's taken from cave recommendations. So, the, and there are a few districts within our DIRG that already have policies similar to this in place. The policy that's as written in the packet was shared with the chief police in town. Got some feedback from him prior to the meeting. So, his feedback was that the way it's written, our, we would not do it during school hours. It would only be before and after school. So, the policy committee took great care to craft that language as such. The chief police feels that there would be more teeth within the policy if we were to do that in a very well-managed, however, doing it during the day. So, doing it in secured locations within the building where students were not present. So, there wouldn't be any students around at the time that we were doing the searches. However, he felt that the policy would be, would yield better results or some results if that was the case. So, the thinking is that we would look to amend the current policy as it's written in the packet, to include language to say that the building could be searched while students are in the building. However, the canines would be excluded from areas where students were present at any time. So, that's a recommendation. So, I encourage you to go over this policy over the course of the next couple of weeks. We will send out an updated language for review next time. But I wanted to get some feedback from folks.
I mean, one of the, if you look at number three in the packet there, I think that if you started number three with all school properties such as lockers, classrooms, storage areas, parking lots, add in the word parking lots there, may be searched, period, and then wipe out before or after the start of the school day and the remainder of that paragraph. And I think you have the gist of what we're talking about there.
Correct. That's right.
How do other districts handle this with regard? I mean, do they do it before and after school as well, or?
They have language around the dogs just not being able to search rooms that are occupied by students.
Okay.
So, they segregate them.
Okay.
There are only three districts in our DIRG that have policies like this.
Okay.
The rest don't have the policies at all.
And they only do before and after?
No, they only do what we're talking about. It says, while students may be in the building during a search, they shall be excluded from any area where the search is being conducted. At no time does the dog come in contact with students.
Right.
Or staff.
There would be no search of persons, and even during a training exercise or some kind of a demonstration, the dogs would not be near the students.
Okay, so you're gonna have that, we're gonna update that number three then?
Correct.
Okay.
That's the recommendation. So, that'll go out to the board ahead of the next meeting, and if we can get feedback, that would be great.
Okay. Is that it? Do you have fifty-one?
The other one is Policy fifty-one, twenty-one, which is just basically detailing the move from CMT to SBC.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions or comments on any of these as a first review right now? All right. All right. Thank you. We will then move on to Item ten, which will be an executive session of the superintendent's mid-year evaluation, which we will invite the superintendent to. So, do I have a motion?
And I'd like to include John Batista as well.
Oh, sure. Great, no problem.
Thank you.
Can I have a motion so that we move into an executive session inviting both the superintendent and the assistant superintendent?
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you. Have a, any discussion? All in favor? Okay. We will move into executive session. We will not come back here, and we will not take any action after the executive session, so we will dismiss from there. All right. Good evening. If we can stand for the pledge, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good evening. We will start with the reporter, the chairman. I have nothing this evening. So, let's...